The broadcast of the regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment will now begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this live broadcast of our virtual meeting today, October 29th, 2020. This meeting includes the remote participation of members as authorized under Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021 due to the declared local health pandemic. For the record, my name is Matt Perry and I'm sure of the zoning board of adjustment. I will now call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Cooper?
Here.
Finn Listen. Hutchins?
Present.
Johansson?
Aye.
O'Geeba? Perry?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Softly?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's seven members.
Okay, we have quorum. Thank you for that. With that, we will proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's legislative information management system available at LIMS. That's L-I-M-S dot Minneapolis MN dot gov. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved. Sandberg?
Is there a second?
Second. Johansson?
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
Perry?
Aye.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softly?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's seven yays.
And that motion passes and we have an approved agenda. I believe all of the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from the October 15th, 2020 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Sandberg?
Second. Johansson?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Upstain.
Johansson?
Aye.
Perry?
Aye.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softly?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's seven yays.
And that motion passes. The minutes from the zoning board of adjustments, October 15th, 2020, meeting are approved. Mr. Ellis, are there any petitions or communications?
Chair Perry, members of the board, there are no petitions or communications this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's review the agenda. I will read the agenda number and the address of the project and state whether it's slated for consent, continuance, withdraw, return, or discussion. And I'll just take a moment to talk about what consent items are and what discussion items are. Consent items are those items that will be passed without discussion by the board. We will be adhering to the staff recommendation found on your agenda under the items recommended motion section. Importantly, any applicable conditions will be listed in the same section. If you agree with this recommendation, including any applicable conditions, you need to do nothing and the board will pass it as recommended. Please check in with a staff member assigned to that item if you have questions following the decision. If you disagree with the recommendation, please indicate you'd like to speak against that item when I ask and we'll put it on the discussion agenda. Discussion items. These are items for which the board will take public testimony, deliberate on, and make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions, and the chair does not vote except in the case of a tie. And it, just for the record, Mr. O'Geeba, one of our board members, has just joined us and can vote on matters coming before us henceforth. So let me go through the recommended disposition of the agenda items. Agenda item number five is 5935 Gerard Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone to speak against this item? If you're on the phone and you want to speak against this item, please press star six to unmute your phone and say you'd like to speak against this item. Agenda item number six is 1511 Fourth Street Northeast. This is a discussion item. Agenda item number seven is 345 38th Street East. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone to speak against this item? I am seeing and hearing no one. So we have, let's review our items on the agenda for consent, and they are five and seven. Is there a motion to adopt these items on consent?
So moved. Sandberg?
Second. Softly?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
O'Geeba?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softly?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's seven yays.
And that motion passes. So for those who are here for agenda items number five or seven, good news, your land use requests are approved. Good luck with your projects. You can hang around or you can, you can drop off the call now if you were here for those items. That's items five or seven. Let's move on to agenda item number six. Ms. Roman.
Thank you, Chair Perry and members of the board. Item number six is for 1511 Fourth Street Northeast, and I do have a presentation. If I T could please bring that up. So this is a 5,397 square foot interior parcel that is currently zoned R2B multiple-family district. On the site, there is an existing single-family structure and a detached garage that were constructed in 1996. The surrounding area is varied, primarily single and two-family dwellings, as well as some institutional and neighborhood-serving commercial uses. One block to the west of the subject site is the University Avenue Goods and Services corridor. The new school charter school is located one block to the east. And as is commonly found in northeast Minneapolis, there are several restaurants located at the intersection just south of the property at Fourth Street Northeast and 15th Avenue Northeast. Next slide, please. The proposal before you is to enclose an existing 157 square foot open covered front porch with half-walls below and windows above. The existing open covered front porch is in conformance with the requirements of the zoning code as a permitted obstruction. So a permitted obstruction is an accessory-use structure or projection of a principal structure that may be located in a required yard. These permitted obstructions have different setback requirements than the primary structure on the lot would. Covered front porches are allowed per the zoning code, but only so long as they comply with standard setback requirements. In this case, once the open covered front porch is enclosed, the enclosed space can no longer be considered a permitted obstruction, and the porch is required to comply with standard setbacks. The setback for this property is established by the structures on either side of the property with a string line at 13.7 feet, where 11.5 feet is proposed by the applicant, thus requiring the variance to the established front yard. Aside from the setback requirement, the enclosed porch would comply with all requirements of the code. Next slide, please. For the variance findings, the lot is a standard shape and size for the city of Minneapolis, and staff does not find this parcel to constitute a practical difficulty. The applicant is proposing to enclose an existing open covered front porch that is currently complying with the ordinance. The proposal also does not meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The ordinance governing setbacks is intended to regulate dimensions and use of yards, as well as separation of uses. The open covered front porch, as a permitted obstruction, is encouraged under the code, as open covered front porches are a common architectural element in the city. They encourage active front yard uses and eyes on the street. The existing home was constructed in 1996 with the open covered front porch, and that matches the character of the neighborhood. The permitted obstructions language explicitly requires that open covered front porches not be enclosed by windows, walls, or screens. For the third finding, the proposed variance would not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the use or enjoyment of the neighboring properties, and the proposed variance would not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public. So as such, staff is recommending denial of this application, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Roman. Are there any questions of staff? I'm not seeing anyone, so we will, and I don't have any questions myself, so we'll open the public hearing, and I would like to see if the applicant would like to testify. And you do that again by pressing star six to unmute your phone and, and then give testimony. And if you could say, yes, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah. Sandy Cordobine and John Cordobine, 1511 Fourth Street Northeast, Minneapolis.
Thank you.
So we do have a presentation today. We had hoped to be a virtual video, but I think it's important that you have a chance to visually see the people, that your decision will impact, but considering that we only have audio today, we'll do the best that we can and proceed. So I'd like to start our presentation today with a testimony that I wrote and submitted to the board, and then from there, we're going to move into a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, members of the zoning board of adjustment, for the opportunity to speak to you today. I want to address your concerns regarding our property at 1511 Fourth Street Northeast in Sheridan Neighborhood. It's important that you have some background and context. My husband, John, and I have lived in our home for 18 years. The neighborhood was very different when we first moved there. Our house had been on the market for over one year before we purchased it. Most of the commercial space near us on 13th Avenue was vacant. Within 10 years, the neighborhood businesses started to grow and flourish. Restaurants, shops, and art space opened. The historic Rich Theater was renovated. Currently, Sheridan continues to be a thriving community, and real estate is in high demand, both for residential and commercial property. When I was informed on October 8th that the planning department was recommending a denial on our porch remodel variance, I took that very personally. You see, I am not just a resident of Sheridan. I have served on the Sheridan Neighborhood Board as a member-at-large, vice president, and president, and was a member of the Northeast Citizen Patrol. For many years, I have served on the Snowball Committee and chaired the Silent Auction Committee. The Snowball is our neighborhood fundraiser that has raised money for neighborhood improvements, which have included street lighting on 13th Avenue and funds towards the development of the beautiful Sheridan Memorial Park. In recent years, Snowball has raised money to support local nonprofits, including the Sheridan Story, my very own bed, and the Northeast Minneapolis Arts District. I was honored to be named the Sheridan Volunteer of the Year for both 2013 and 2019. My church, Grace Lutheran, was a congregation that purchased Holland Elementary School at 1506 Sixth Street Northeast in 2010. The school had sat vacant for five years. The building renamed Grace Center for Community Life is a thriving community center, including a church, charter school, little kitchen food shelf, and event space. My husband and I were eager to help fund the new handicap-accessible playground at Grace Center called Fair Play. We are proud that our names appear on the donator wall. John and I were fortunate to apply for and receive the Sheridan Fix and Paint Loan 2020. The loan is designed to help homeowners make improvements to an external portion of their property. This is an interest-free loan with a MACHING grant up to $5,000 and forgiven after five years if you remain in your property. The loan is managed through the Center for Environmental, excuse me, Energy and Environment. The application includes a statement about the project and requires a license contractor registered with the Department of Labor. We close on the loan July 30th. The work is required to be completed in 120 days. I have already requested two extensions, given our permit status. Over time, our neighborhood has grown significantly, and we have more foot traffic and vehicle noise than ever before. Public safety has become a growing concern. Our current porch faces the west. It's hot in the summer, and we seldom use it. Our plan is to enclose our open porch to the three-season porch with windows. An enclosure will provide more privacy and allow us to use the porch more comfortably throughout most of the year. In addition, we can better maintain a watchful eye out on the street. The enclosure will fit in nicely with the style of housing on the block, as well as add value to our house. Our contractor applied for the necessary permits in August. What we anticipated to be relatively straightforward has evolved into a frustrating, disappointing, and confusing process. We were informed in early September that our permit was denied, and the city is requiring a variance due to the minimum established front yard setbacks. The survey of the property is required for this variance. On September 28th, a man came to our home, dressed in street clothes with no ID and an unmarked vehicle. When I saw him on the porch, I asked who he was. He identified himself. Imagine my surprise when he asked me if we were building a new garage. I had to explain to him the nature of our project. We met with the city planner for the general land use reapplication, um, excuse me, general land use application process on October 1st. We were told at that meeting that the planner would be recommending to the zoning board to move forward with our project. We were pleased to receive notice on October 6th that the application was complete and could be placed on the agenda for a public hearing on October 29th. I called the city planner on October 8th to confirm the date. I was informed at that time that the planning department is now recommending a denial exactly one week after being told the project should move forward. When I inquired as to why, I was reminded of the setback concern and told that the design of the neighborhood was intended for open porches. Our block and Fourth Street Northeast, from 15th Avenue Northeast to 16th Avenue Northeast, includes a bar, duplexes, one fourplex, and, and single-family homes. Street-facing open porches are the exception to the rule, with the majority of the homes having closed porches and stoops. We have submitted a picture graph of the block, and we'll get into that in our PowerPoint. Our block is, sorry, our home is the newest on the block, having been built in 1996. The majority of the homes in the area were built in the early 1900s. Nearby homes with enclosed porches appear to be as close, if not closer, to the curb. However, I was informed that older homes were grandfathered in with respect to setbacks. As a long-term resident of Sheridan, I have witnessed multiple developers come into Sheridan and surrounding northeast neighborhoods with RFPs for apartment buildings and received a green light with minimum pushback from the city. While I recognize that Minneapolis is zoned for high density, there appears to be a double standard with respect to homeowners. We simply want to make an improvement to our property. However, there is a minor setback concern, whereas the setback at NNE apartments at 107 13th Avenue Northeast is so close to the curb that ground-level apartments with floor-to-ceiling windows back right up against the sidewalk. Historically, these buildings become less desirable in 20 years when renters seek newer flats with advanced amenities. Our single-family home, on the other hand, will remain standing and only increase in value. We have submitted four letters of support for our project, including the snowboard, the duplex owners directly to the north and south of us, and one long-term neighbor who has lived on the block for over 26 years. We respectfully request that you grant this variance. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. We'd like to move to our PowerPoint.
How long is the PowerPoint?
It is 14 pages.
I'm, I'm going to have to limit your time to another seven or eight minutes. So if you can squeeze.
A lot of the PowerPoint is pictures of the neighborhood, so it should go brief.
Okay. Please proceed, then.
Okay. We don't see the PowerPoint up yet, but we have a hard copy in front of us. Do you see it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll proceed. So why are we here? We want to convert an open porch to a three-season porch. What's the problem? The planned setback change is 21.2.
They already know that.
Well, can you speak?
All right, that's fine.
We'll have John speak.
Well, so our understanding was that, you know, it's a small setback issue, and our interpretation was that it's not the house, it's the staircase. That may not be the case. But in the, in the plan, there's a quote that I think Sarah actually read, which says that covered front porches are common residential building stock in the city. Well, if you look at our.
Slide eight, slide three?
Slide three, if you look at the overhead of this, there are only three open porches. So by building a closed porch on our property, even if it violates the setback, it's not out of the norm for the neighborhood. And then the following ones are just pictures of the houses in our neighborhood, and you can get a sense of what they look like.
So slide four, our house is the one on the far left?
Okay.
So slide five, we're moving to the west, I'm sorry, the east side, east side of the block and Nightcap, I'm sorry, the west side of the block, I'm sorry, and Nightcap Bar is on the far left. Then slide six continues on the west side.
So that's one of the open porches.
Slide eight moves to the other side of the, and there's a fourplex there on the right, the one fourplex. Slide nine, that's one house that's newer on the far left, the blue one, was built in 1988. Otherwise, the majority of the homes are early 1900s. And slide 10.
Back around to put our house on the far right.
Yep. And that white house on the far left was built in 1933. Otherwise, all the homes were built in early 1900s. The duplex to the direct north of us was built in 1895.
So as Sandy said, we don't really use the current porch anymore, so there's really no eyes on the street. If we could enclose it, we'd use it far more often. I mean, we're certainly not out there in the winter, so you can imagine, that's what, five or six months? And for us, the enclosed porch would diminish street noise, for sure. So we think that we're actually putting more eyes on the street by enclosing it than by having it open.
Slide 12, what's in it for the city of Minneapolis? Enclosed porch will increase our home value. That means higher taxes, so that's a benefit for the city, more eyes on the street. So really, this project is a net benefit to the city of Minneapolis. And who's seeking the variance? I think it's important that you know, since you can't see us, it's important that you know who we are. So slide 13, we've been here 18 years. We're donors of the local playground behind us at Grace Center for Community Life. I'm, like I said, I'm a former board member of Sheridan Neighborhood. I'm the two-time winner of Snow's Volunteer of the Year, active member of Grace Lutheran Church, 27 years as a, as a social worker. My husband has worked at RSP Architects, which is in the Grain Belt, the beautiful Grain Belt brewery over there, and now currently works for the YMCA. We're both a nonprofit. We're passionate about our work, and we're passionate about living in our neighborhood and Minneapolis for Jones. Last page, last page 14, support from our neighbors. John Aker, owner of 1516 Northeast Fourth Street. Been in the neighborhood for 26 years. He says the Cordobine's plan will fit in nicely with the eclectic styles and treatments along the street. Connor McCarthy, owner of 1505, has the duplex directly south of us. This, he, he bought that, I believe, two years ago. This requested variance for closed porch will not stand out as different from the neighborhood properties. Mark Keldenberg, the owner of the duplex directly north of us, has 15, 15 Northeast Fourth Street. Danny and John have been great neighbors and closing their porch with the nice in this neighborhood. Karen Peterson, the snow, current snowboard president, says, I attended a board meeting, and the board unanimously agreed to pass, to suggest a letter of support to pass the variance. And in her letter, in the letter, it states, we believe that the enclosure of an already existing porch to reduce noise and make it usable throughout the year poses only benefits to the neighborhood. I want to make sure that the zoning board has read all those letters. They are our letters of support as we look at this project.
We've read everything that we have received from, from city staff.
Okay.
Okay. That's all we have for you.
There, we might have questions for you from our board members. So thanks for the presentation and keeping it in, in, brief enough that we have time to discuss it as a board. Mr. Hutchinson has a question for you.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Thank you applicants for your presentation. I just want to say, it doesn't look bad. It looks nice. The only thing I'm struggling with would be, is there anything specific, ultimately 100% specific to your property, that would make this possible? Is there something that stands out about your property alone? Thank you.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I, I think what Mr. Hutchins is, is asking is one of our legal, we have to find on a legal basis for get granting a variance, and there has to be something unique about your property that would allow, not allow you to use it in a reasonable way. And so staff has said they can't find anything unique about your property, and I think Mr. Hutchins, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but he is trying to seek the answer to that question as well. Is there something unique about your property that makes it not be able to be used in a reasonable way?
Well, I guess one of the Well, I guess one of the ways, one of the things would be that it faces west. So this is, this is the problem. Obviously, we live in Minnesota, so an open porch is not usable for, you know, what, what would you say, a quarter or a third or more of the time? Um, and then the fact that it faces west means that in the summertime, when it is warm, it's really not usable because, uh, when it's warm and the sun bears down on it, it's just not comfortable to be out there.
So it's not very practical most of, most of the year.
Right.
Okay, I, I will just, I'll say that, and I'll let my board, my colleagues on the board, um, discuss this when we close the public hearing and discuss this. But I'll just say, um, that open porches facing west is not a very unique thing in the city of Minneapolis. There are plenty of, um, there are plenty of residents, residential properties that have open porches facing to the west that, that I wouldn't, um, my colleagues may disagree with me, but that doesn't strike me, strike me as a unique characteristic.
Well, the other unique characteristics of our home is one of the newest in the area, 1996. And for me, if it's a newer, newer property, it should be, uh, it, it should, um, be able to stay in the neighborhood longer and imported, in order for it to increase in value, it seems to be that it should be more comfortable to live in. And to be more comfortable to live in, then it needs to have some space that you could use throughout the year.
Okay, we have another question from a board member, Mr. Johansson.
Thanks Chair Perry. I have a question, um, considering then, is the noise from the restaurant and bars something that's driven you to want to enclose this porch for more of a safety reason?
Yes, it's a, it's, that we do have increased noise from the bars, but increased noise in general. This neighborhood has grown significantly and we just have a lot more people coming into the neighborhood, not, a lot of people living in the neighborhood, but a lot of people coming into the neighborhood. Um, we live right on a bar crawl, so they go from one bar to another and they come down. And I will tell you that most of it, in the summertime, we have to keep the air conditioning on and our windows closed because we can't sleep at night, the window, with the, um, the noise outside can be pretty, pretty loud. So we have to keep the windows closed, keep a fan on so we don't kind of drown the noise out. But it can be, it can be pretty loud. And I think that's one of the reasons originally why the house took forever to sell was, there wasn't a lot of, of, uh, incentive for a family to buy the home given the two bars across the street. Plus, at that time, there wasn't a lot of other commercial real estate to draw in families.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicants? I am not seeing any, so thanks again for your presentation. We'll go on to the next person in queue, um, which is Mr. Helmer. Would you like to speak? Mr. Helmer, and, and you press star six to unmute your phone. You just, we just heard the word project. Yes, is this Mr. Helmer?
Okay, hi, my name is Mark Helmer, I'm the contractor, uh, owner and operator of WVM Construction. Uh, the customers came to me with a proposition to, um, make more use out of their porch, uh, uh, because, uh, it was, it's, it's virtually unusable in that area with the amount of traffic and, and, um, street noise during the summer months. So I took on this project. I didn't see it as a problem since it was an existing, uh, open porch. So I thought that enclosing it wouldn't have been an issue. Apparently, I was, I was, I was wrong, um, and now we're here. But, um, I just, I'd like to, you know, just put in my support to my customers. Um, you know, they lived there a long time, they've endured a lot of growth in the area. Um, they give forth to the community and I just, uh, hope that you people, uh, grant their variance at this time. And that is all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next, next person in queue is Ms. Peterson. If you want to press star six to unmute your phone-
My apologies.
And provide testimony, if you can give your name and, and address.
Yes, hello, good afternoon, this is Karen Peterson, thank you for the opportunity. I live at 215 Broadway Street Northeast. I am the president of the Sheridan Neighborhood Organization and it is in this capacity that I'm testifying today in support of the Cordobians' application. I know I'm short on time, so I'm going to dive right in and try to speak fast about section 525.500 of the Code of Ordinances. Um, point one, I, surely there is a practical difficulty existing in that the house the Cordobians built 18 years ago was built with an open porch and they can't actually pick up their home and move it back three feet in order to put, um, a porch on and comply. So it seems to me that that adds to the unique situation to fit in a variance. Uh, point two, what could be more reasonable than seeking to be, to make a porch more of use, um, to use a porch more, um, especially in Minnesota with her amazing changing of seasons? Uh, additionally, adding a porch adds insulation, reducing heat loss, which is totally in keeping with the city's sustainability possibility, which is a win-win. And as already been discussed, if you have a, an enclosed porch, this will add more eyes on the street, more security because they're out there more often. Finally, in the, the third section, if you look at the length of the street as they were talking about, if you look up and down the block, Fourth, uh, Fourth Street, you will not find row, row after row of uniform homes. Um, like most of Northeast, it's full of variety. You have open porches, closed porches, homes close to the sidewalk, some further setback, some with enclosed, long ago enclosed porches, um, so enclosed, they just look like a part of the house. It's hard to imagine how enclosing one porch could in any way be injurious to the character of the neighborhood because there's already such amazing variety, like all over Northeast. Neighbors on both sides, all up and down the street support this, the neighborhood supports this, as they've already stated, the Cordobians have been very active and involved in the community, very active members. And one final point, I did research over the last month, Planning Commission, just to see how many of, uh, how many setbacks were being approved for new developments? And the answer was all of them, every single one. And some were very significant for deviations. And it seems like we really ought to give our longtime homeowners the same considerations as we do for new developments. Uh, so respectfully, we at Sheridan ask that you approve the Cordobian application. This is Karen Peterson saying thank you very much for the time.
Thank, thanks for your testimony. I just have one quick question for you, Ms. Peterson. Um, uh, just to get clarification, um, and I could ask the applicants this as well, but, uh, since you've been there, uh, in the neighborhood for quite a while, you said they built the, the, uh, the home that they're trying to get the variance for, is that correct?
No, I, they did not build the home. It's not mine. I don't know, I didn't know they built them, I said bought the home.
Oh, they bought it in 96.
Bought the home, yes.
Okay.
I just, this is Sandy Cordobian. I just wanted to clarify that the property was built in 1996, we're the second owners, we bought it in 2002.
Okay, great, thanks for clearing that up for me. Okay, we don't have anyone else in queue that I see, um, and so, uh, we'll close the public hearing and, um, I will take board comment. Any board comment? Uh, we have Mr. Sandberg and then Mr. Ogiba.
Yes, thank you Chair Perry. Um, I certainly understand the staff's position on this with regard to, uh, what's, um, promoted throughout the city. I think, I, there, I heard some unique characteristics of this, uh, property in that it's very close to a busy commercial intersection and, uh, which I'm sure encourages parking in front of their house and a lot, a lot of activity already. Um, so I understand the applicant's need for doing this. Um, I also see some unique characteristic in this property in that I think in general in the neighborhood, the setbacks are very close to the street. And, uh, that kind of precludes, uh, large trees for shading of properties which occur in quite a few other areas of the city where open porches are much more predominant. So I think I would, um, say that there are a few unique characteristics of the property, but I'd like to hear from other board members.
Sure. And, um, do you have any thoughts before, um, we talked, we go down to Mr. Ogiba and then Mr. Softly, um, on the second finding?
Uh, the second finding is whether it's a, um, reasonable use of the property.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think it is since-
The staff, the staff is saying it isn't.
Well, I think an enclosed porch, if it can be used as a porch, uh, is probably reasonable in that as the applicant has stated, they can't use it as a porch now. So I would say that it's reasonable. It would, um, being used as a porch and not as a, as a sleeping area or something, uh, provide eyes on the street that don't occur there now. So I think, uh, with that, with regard to that, it could be reasonable.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Mr. Ogiba.
Thank you Chair Perry. Um, I actually had a question of staff, I just was, a point of clarification. Um, on the calculation of the 13.7 feet required for the front yard setback, can staff just clarify, um, how that number is, is devised for this, uh, particular property?
Uh, thank you Chair Perry, members of the board. Um, so in this case, for a reduction in a required setback, we, um, established what's called a string line. And so, um, if you would take a look at the survey that was provided for this property, um, we draw a line between the frontmost corner of the property to the north and the frontmost corner of the property to the south, um, of the subject property, not including any permitted obstructions. Um, so that doesn't include the vestibule to the south or the open covered front porch to the north. Um, and, uh, that calculation, um, was the 13.7 feet.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Softly.
Thank you Chair Perry. I just want to comment that I am in favor of approving the variance. I agree with the comments that Board Member Sandberg, uh, shared with us, um, regarding the traffic and the noise and the concerns about being in such a busy, uh, commercial area and with not one, but just two bars very close by, both Nightcap and May Slacks. Um, I also agree that the, the close, close setbacks restrict the, about the ability to, uh, to grow trees in the front yards of these homes, both on the west side and the east side of the street. I was actually taken by some of the photographs in the applicant's presentation that showed, um, just a distinct lack of tree cover on the west side of the street. and I guess that's all I have to say about that right now, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johansson.
Thanks Chair Perry. Uh, I agree with comments already made, uh, by Sandberg and some of our others. I think, uh, there's a way we can find out to make this work for them.
Okay. Um, anybody else wish to comment? Or anybody have any additional questions? Um, I'd like to ask staff if the, uh, oh, Mr. Softly?
Thank you Chair Perry, yeah, I just realized the, um, the additional point that I wanted to make, and it again relates back to the presentation from the applicants. It shows the incredible diversity of the fronts of each home and how an enclosed porch is a relative, is, um, how most of the homes do not even have porches, let alone open porches. And in that sense, I think what the applicants are proposing is consistent with the neighborhood, uh, in, in every possible way. And I think that it's consistent with the regulations that do relate to setbacks in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Um, uh, my question of staff is, do you feel that, um, the comments by board members have met the requirements for reasonable use? The second finding.
Chair Perry, members of the board, um, I can certainly understand the justification for the second finding that, uh, the board has presented.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion.
This is Sandberg, I'll, uh, move approval of the variance with the, uh, findings, uh, as discussed by myself and the other board members.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, so Ogiba.
Ogiba, okay. And is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
So sorry folks, I got disconnected briefly. Uh, with that, I'll take the vote. Cooper?
No.
I'm so sorry, uh, Ms. Cooper, it cut out, was that a yay or a nay?
Nay.
Nay, thank you. Hutchins?
Yay.
Thank you. Johansson?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Nay.
That's I V A to nay.
So that motion passes and that means the land use request is approved, so good luck with your project and thanks for taking time to, for everyone who called in, uh, and for the applicants for, for providing the testimony. With that, we have completed all the items on the agenda for this meeting. Um, I'll ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this meeting. And I see that there is no new or old business and we have no announcements. So, um, without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next meeting will be November 12th, 2020. Thank you everyone. Good night.